Welcome to the Glen Allen District 41 Candidate Forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Glen Allen. I am by a line and as a member of the League of Women Voters of Wheaton, in your moderator for today. I live in West Chicago, so I will not be voting for any of the candidates participating in the forum this morning. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes candidates or parties for any of us. The League is not affiliated with any political party. The League's purpose is to promote civic responsibility through the informed and active participation of citizens in government and civil civic discourse. Promoting forums for voter education is a major mission of the League of Women Voters, so citizens can become better informed about the issues facing their community and to learn about candidates running for office. The format for today is a candidate forum and not a debate. Candidates are expected to accurately represent the facts, and their responses reflect their own views and opinions, and refrain from commenting on their views about the candidates. The League of Women Voters is not responsible for the accuracy of statements made by the candidates. It is the responsibility of community members, news media, opposing candidates, to fact-check statements made by the candidates. All candidates attending have signed and returned the ground rules to participate. These rules specify the format, the time limits, broadcasting of the forum, and other rules related to the conduct of the forum. The candidates will gain an alphabetical order with one and a half-minute voting statements. They will then alternate the order in which they answer questions for a maximum of one and a half minutes. After each question portion of the forum, each candidate will give a one-minute closing statement. Members of the League will act as timers and I will enforce those time limits. Should a candidate exceed the time limit, I will ask them to finish their sentence and move on to the next candidate. We have received a large quantity of questions from the community in advance of today's forum. To ensure that questions are presented about lots of topics, a panel of experienced members of the League of Women Voters have reviewed the questions submitted for appropriateness, applicable to all candidates, and to avoid duplication. You may submit questions during the forum, writing your questions logically on index cards provided, which volunteers will collect. We will do our best to read as many questions as possible within the timeframe for the forum allotted. We are grateful to those of you in the community who have taken time to learn more about the candidates before casting your vote by attending and watching this candidate forum. For those in attendance today, we request that you do not take photos or video during the forum. It is a distraction to other members of the audience and to the candidates. Please listen attentively, turn off your phones and other electronic devices, avoid commenting or disrupting others during the forum, and refrain from applause until the end of each forum. We are also grateful to these candidates who are not only willing to serve in office, but who have agreed to come today to share their goals and positions. So let's begin with the lead statements. Candidate Butler, your opening statement for one and a half minutes.
Hi, I'm Jessica Butler, and I want to thank the League for hosting this forum and for all of those in attendance for taking the time to learn more about us. I work as a user research consultant for a mental health care company, and I've lived in Glen Allen for the past 16 years with my husband, who is an elementary school principal and former special ed coordinator and former third-grade teacher. We have two daughters who attend Hadley Junior High, and we feel very grateful to be part of the D-41 community. I became an active volunteer in D-41 when my oldest began kindergarten. I was a Lincoln PTA Committee Chair, an officer with the PTA Council, as part of the successful referendum committee that finally replaced all of the portables with safe learning structures. I currently serve on the D-41 School Board as liaison to the D-41 Kids Foundation. Prior to this year, I also served on the Policy Committee and as liaison to the PUP Foundation and as Parent Education Chair to PTA Council. My experience on the Board has resulted in many successes, including four or five schools in the top 10% of the state and recognition for good governance from the Illinois Association of School Boards. Despite these achievements, there's still more work to be done, and I'm committed to using my experience and knowledge to help steer our district towards continued excellence. I believe my track record of success combined with my ongoing commitment to our community make me the ideal candidate for reelection to the D-41 support.
Thank you. Candidate Estes, your opening statement.
Hello, I'm Ted Estes. Oh, wait a minute. Hang on. There we go. Hello, I'm Ted Estes, a 29-year resident of Glen Allen, a father of two graduates, Glenn Ward-West, a software engineer who developed pinball games, and a current member of the Board of Education for Glen Allen District 41. Four years ago, I ran for School Board because I value the opportunities our school district provides to help kids find and succeed in their areas of interest. I ran because I recognized the role that our schools serve to connect us within the community. I ran because I wanted to preserve our investments in our schools, maintain the district's reputation for quality education, and ensure that our neighborhoods continue to attract home buyers. Today, as I run for reelection, all those same reasons still apply, but as I reflect on the last four years of service, the professional development that helped me become a better board member, the way that this current board and superintendent embraced the concept of becoming a team of eight and working collaboratively together, the unexpected challenges that made us shift course for two difficult years, and also the accomplishments that were made in spite of those challenges, I find that my biggest motivation is that I want to continue making use of all that experience and that I have more to give to my community. I look forward to exchanging perspectives this morning. Please contact me afterwards if you have any questions or comments. Thanks.
Thank you. Candidate Hill, you have one and a half minutes for your opening statement.
Good morning. My name is Julie Hill. I am a mom. I have a child at Ben Franklin and a child at Hadley. I'm a former educator. I taught early childhood education at Chicago Public Schools before my kids were born, and I'm an advocate. And during my time on the Board, we have advocated for federal funding for early childhood education, funding for COVID mitigations to match the PPP loans that private schools got, and funding for capital funding grants in the state of Illinois for districts who need to build or improve their facilities. I am running on a platform of reflect, respect, and protect. We need to reflect the voice of the community, respect the experts, the evidence, and the information they bring us, and protect our educational investments. During our tenure on this Board, we have won awards for top 10% performance of Illinois schools for the whole district. We have been named Schools to Watch. Our middle school principal has been a middle school principal to watch for the County of DuPage. We have won Board Governance Awards, and we have been fiscally responsible with budget surpluses every year. In the next four years, we will hire a new superintendent. Our strategic plan tells us we need to build for full-day kindergarten, and we will work to increase equity and close the achievement gaps. Thank you for being here, and I ask for your vote in April.
Candidate Jessica, your opening statement.
Good morning. I recently read that effective leaders bring their assets, not their agendas. That best sums up why I'm running. I'm a mother to first-grade twins. I've been in education for 16 years, and I'm currently the coordinator for teaching and learning of a pre-K through eighth-grade school district. And in that role, I oversee curricular adoptions. I analyze our achievement data. I plan and present professional development to our teachers, and I also evaluate those teachers. And those are the assets I'll bring to this Board. It's time to shift this Board's focus away from their agendas and back on our students' learning. It's also time to stop treating taxpayers like an ATM and more like partners in the decision-making process. The failed November referendum taught us that this Board prioritizes its own wants over what the community needs, and they're disregarding 64% of voters who voted no and trying to do it again. I'm running for the Board to speak up and provide a fresh perspective that's sorely needed. If we don't vote in someone new, we run the risk of seeing another referendum, the continued use of ineffective curriculum, and the hiring of a new superintendent that isn't a true representation of our community's ideals. This is a great opportunity to get diversity of thought back on this Board. It's a time that we need it more than ever. I hope after today, you see that too. Thank you so much for having me this morning.
Thank you. Our first question will start with candidate Estes. And the question is this: What do you feel are the biggest challenges or opportunities the district has? What initiatives would you implement to address them?
So, our biggest challenge right now is the facilities issue. We are short on space. And that question actually came up from the teachers recently interviewing candidates, how you can solve it. And I wish I had a great answer for that, because as we saw in the referendum, there was a lot of pushback. So we'll have to study some more. Hopefully we'll get a few answers coming out of the feasibility study and the master facilities study coming up in the next kind of months. What our opportunities are, though, is we really are a high-performing district, and we're recognized outside of our little bubble as a high-performing district. Other districts look to us to see what we are doing, and I'd like to see us continue that. We certainly have work to do on some of our lowest performers, our at-risk students, and that's encapsulated in our goals for the strategic plan in the next five years, which outlines how we are going to address the needs of every student.
Thank you. Candidate Hill, what do you feel are the biggest challenges or opportunities the district has, and what initiatives would you implement to address them?
I would have to agree with Ted or Mr. Estes that the facilities are definitely our biggest challenge. Despite years of fiscally responsible behavior from the Board and the district, we still don't have buildings to provide full-day kindergarten, which is provided in 90% of districts across the state. We are way behind on that. We know the effects of high-quality early childhood education. That includes kindergarten. They are lifelong, and our students deserve them just as much as anybody else in this district or in this We had a population study done in January 2022 that expects our population at D-41 to remain the same or increase a little bit. That means our buildings are only going to get more crowded. And while we do have a healthy fund reserve, we do not have all the facilities that we need. So I think those are problems that we have yet to address. So we are working on that, as Mr. Estes mentioned earlier.
Thank you. Candidate Pucheska, repeat the question one more time. What do you feel are the biggest challenges or opportunities the district has? What initiatives would you implement to address them?
The biggest challenge is that this Board needs to regain the trust of the community. They surveyed 500 people for pre-referendum survey data. Glen Allen is made up of 27,000 people, and they touted that as community engagement. That's not community engagement. They wanted to take students out of their neighborhood schools. I spoke to someone at a meet and greet over the weekend who could see Ben Franklin from her house, and they were going to have her go to Spalding. We need to regain the community's trust, and the way we do that is voting on diverse thought. Somebody who's willing to speak up for the community, somebody who wants to represent the community, someone who's listening to the community, and I've been listening. We have great opportunity in our district. Our students are high achieving. I analyzed our achievement data. We're back to pre-pandemic achievement numbers. That's unheard of. I analyze achievement data for a living. This is my job. I work on how are we going to regain our learning loss. That doesn't happen here in D-41. We have to capitalize on that achievement. We have to analyze our student groups. We have to compare their student group data to the whole. And we need to hire a new superintendent who knows how to do that and has a plan to take our already high achieving to the next level.
Thank you. Candidate Hill, the next question will begin with you.
Oh, I think you skipped me.
Oh, I'm sorry!
That's okay.
It's so early!
We all make mistakes. Are we ready?
Yeah.
So I think the greatest challenge facing us is equity, and that is a huge focus of our strategic plan. It's why we're so concerned about facilities and providing adequate spaces, especially for our earliest learners. When you look at the referendum data and you see who voted for it, it was the communities that knew they needed it the most, right? And it would be unethical for us to not continue to pursue that, because our learners who need the most support in their earliest learning need that opportunity. And we're one of three districts in DuPage County that doesn't offer full-day kindergarten. Are we proud of that? I want to keep working to achieve that, and call it an agenda if you want to, but my agenda is for student success. So the other factor here is the teacher shortage. We offer a great culture and compensation package for our teachers so that we can attract top talent. That's important for our equity goals. But there is a culture war in education that brings teachers down, and we, as a community, are responsible for creating that culture. And we need to be supportive of our educators and of public education. I think another interesting challenge is the way technology is moving so fast. I work in artificial intelligence in my role, and so I got stopped, but another cool thing.
Thank you. Now, candidate Hill, specifically, what do you view as the role of a Board of Education member regarding the classroom curriculum, books, and other educational resources in the district schools?
The Board is not responsible for choosing the curriculum. That is the job of the educators, the people that the district employs with advanced degrees in education. They are responsible for vetting curriculums, testing them, piloting them. And you said books, too?
Yes.
Yes. And the Board is not responsible for choosing the books that are available to the children. That's not our work. That is the work, again, of the educators. They choose the books. That's not the parents' job. That's not the Board's job. They're highly qualified people to do that work.
Thank you. Candidate Pucheska, specifically, what do you view as the role of a Board of Education member regarding the classroom curriculum, books, and other educational resources in the district schools?
Sure. The role of Board members is to follow Board policy. And Board policy states that there's a clear chain of command for the selection and review of curriculum materials, and the Board is the last in line of that chain of command, and I fully support that process. I'm into a part of it in my district. I know it well. What the Board is responsible for is ensuring the efficacy of our curriculum. And currently, in our district, we have a literacy curriculum that was debunked during research in 2020. It's now 2023. And the Board's job is to put pressure on the administration to prove the efficacy of our curriculum, to look at our achievement data and say, this curriculum is working for us, or this curriculum's not working for us, and this Board has not done that. They're not asking those tough questions. I know to ask those questions. I'm going to ask those questions. We need those questions asked.
Candidate Butler, the same question.
So my role in the selection of materials for school libraries and for curriculum development is limited to governance and oversight. I play a role in setting policies and ensuring that the district's missions and values are reflected in the selection of those materials, but the day-to-day work of choosing appropriate and effective materials is left to our highly-qualified educational experts. Our strategic plan process involves parents, taxpayers, staff at all levels, and community partners. And so that is what has set our mission, vision, and values, and that's what we're adhering to. In terms of curriculum, I'm leaving that to the experts, and it is happening on March 6. We're going to have our second update in terms of how we're achieving our academic goals, and we'll learn more about the literacy curriculum. And I think that answers the question.
Okay. Candidate Estes.
So core per-school district policy, as has been mentioned, the Board approves a curriculum that's recommended by the superintendent. As per policy, the superintendent directs a curriculum review program that regularly evaluates the instructional program and assures the program meets the needs of the students and the expectations of the community, and also helps our students lead the standards that are usually set by the state. And then the superintendent reports to the Board, gives us a review. And our role is to monitor performance, see how the curriculum is working, and it's an ongoing process, and it is in process right now. As far as the current reading program, I just want to point out that there are many pieces that have supplemented it beyond just the Lucy Cockens part. So teachers have quite a few things at their disposal in terms of teaching students, because every student has a different way of learning. So no one answer is the right one for every student. And as Jess mentioned, there's a review going on right now, and I trust the experts for a positive representation.
Thank you. Candidate Pucheska, do you support an all-day kindergarten program for District 41 students? If yes, how would you implement? If no, how will you close the achievement, the education gap?
It's not up to me whether I want full-day kindergarten or not. It's up to the community if they want full-day kindergarten or not. And we don't have that answer. They surveyed 500 people of 27,000. Does the community want full-day kindergarten? It doesn't matter what I want. How we can close the achievement gap, even if we can't make full-day kindergarten work, is getting a foundational literacy curriculum that teaches our students explicit phonics instruction. They can talk about how we supplemented all they want. Supplementing is not enough for early readers, for multilingual learners. We're doing them a disservice, and we've been doing it a disservice since 2020, and they have done nothing about it. They haven't asked the right questions. They haven't asked our administrators to produce our data. And yes, we can look at IAR data, and I touted that earlier, but IAR data is only third through eighth graders. When we talk about phonics, we're talking about kindergarten, first grade, second grade. How are those populations doing on our literacy tests? How are they doing on map compared to the whole? How are they doing compared to students across the nation that have been receiving foundational literacy services since 2021, when everybody else hit away with Lucy Cockens?
Thank you. Candidate Butler, do you support all-day kindergarten program for District 41 students? If yes, how will you implement? If no, how will you close the education gap?
Well, my previous answers indicate that I do support a full-day kindergarten program, and I think maybe this is where the past 16 years in this community, talking to people, is an advantage over someone who's only been here about a year and a half. And that is certainly, when I first started having these conversations, not everybody was convinced that it was necessary. But that is changing. More and more families are dual-income households, and families are needing a full-day kindergarten solution. They're mad when they find out we don't have one, because of course they assume we're going to have it, because everywhere they've ever lived has had it. And in terms of implementing it, you know, we've commissioned a feasibility study to see what is possible. We're reflecting the community in our choice to explore all options instead of just what's going to be the cheapest or is expected to be the least expensive. It's likely that the least expensive option is to have a full-day kindergarten center at Churchill. But we know the community has reservations about busing kindergarten, so we're exploring all options so we can make a long-range, informed decision about how to proceed.
Candidate Estes, the same question.
Four years ago, I stated my support for full-day kindergarten. I still have that. I still support it. And I think our community does, too. The feedback shows that they do. It's just in terms of what's the ask in order to implement that. And it was shown, as well as well, that ask was big, and it was a little too big. Now, that ask wasn't just full-day kindergarten. It had to do with recognizing our schools. I was obviously overly optimistic that some of the feedback from the community was that they wanted a comprehensive solution and not something just to scale, and that's what we gave the choice of. So now we know that's not going to fly. We're going to take a look, go back to the drawing board. That's why we have a feasibility study coming up. What can we do with existing funds, right? Fallback position is if we can't do full-day kindergarten for all, then we need to implement it for our needed students, our most at-risk students. That's how we adjust our attack the education gap.
Thank you. Candidate Hill, do you support an all-day kindergarten program for District 41 students? If yes, how will you implement? And if no, how will you close the education gap?
Yes, I absolutely support a full-day kindergarten program. As a former early childhood educator, I know the importance and the power of high-quality early childhood education, and that includes kindergarten. This is a matter of what the children need, and a lot of our children need full-day kindergarten. Not every child needs it. Some are able to get enrichment outside of school, but the ones that we need to be worried about are the ones who cannot do that. And we need to provide high-quality early childhood education in kindergarten. The rest of the state, 90% of them have it. We do not. What do we know that they don't? How are we going to achieve it? As has been mentioned already, we have a feasibility study coming up to see what we can do with our fund reserves that we already have in the bank. We also have commissioned a master's facilities plan to show us a more long-term, comprehensive approach for growth opportunities. The strategic plan was created, oh my gosh, with lots of members of the community, district staff, a couple Board members, and I had the opportunity to sit on that. And that strategic plan calls for full-day kindergarten. And our job as a Board is to support that strategic plan. And I think I'm out of time.
Thank you. Candidate Butler, the next question will begin with you. What would you see as your role in enhancing communication between the district and the community at large?
That is such a tough nut to crack, because we've been really trying hard to do it for the past four years. Before I was even on the Board, I spent two years attending Board meetings and writing Board meeting summaries to get more people engaged. And the fact is, it's difficult to capture attention unless you're controversial or you're creating a spectacle, which is what we had before we joined. But we worked really hard to make ourselves not a spectacle. And we've seen really low attendance in our meetings, which is really hard when we feel like we're doing something really powerful and meaningful. But also, it's a compliment, right, that you trust what we're doing. And I think that bit us a little bit then when we started having these discussions about how to solve for facilities. And we had people engaged. We had good engagement with that process relative to what our consultant that we had hired had experienced in other communities. But a lot of people weren't paying attention because they didn't think they needed to despite all these efforts. So how am I going to change it? I mean, we've switched tactics. We're not inviting you to our, we're still inviting you to all of our events. We have a ton of them, coffees, meetings, a committee of the whole structure, where you can interact with us more. But we're inviting ourselves to where you already are, to just get more of the word out.
Thank you. Candidate Estes, what would you see as your role in enhancing communication between the district and the community at large?
Well, as Jess mentioned, that is really a tough question to answer, because in my view, we communicate a lot as a district, also as messages from the Board, and as evidenced by some things. For example, people saying they were caught off guard, where did the referendum come from? Even with the volume of communication, the evidence shows that it's not effective enough. So one of the things that the Board has asked of the, there's a community advisory subcommittee, is to start studying this. is to start studying this, this topic and come up with suggestions as well. Because when we take a look at what other districts are recommending, or what other experts are recommending, they're telling us to do the same thing we're already doing, or like, well, we need something different. And as Jess mentioned, sometimes when just inviting people to come see you isn't enough, so we've been, our next thing we're trying is, please invite us to your event. Do you have some sort of book club or other, you know, some other community event? You want to know what's going on in our district? We'll come and give you any minute of this stuff.
Candidate Hill.
Can you repeat the question, please?
What do you see as your role in enhancing communication between the district and the community at large?
I'm going to sound a bit like a broken record after Ms. Butler and Mr. Essie's here. But the Illinois Association of School Boards has, has like a job description for us. They give us six things we're supposed to do as a board, and engage with the community is one of them. I even think it's near the top of the list. And as they mentioned, we do community of the whole meetings, also museums, meetings where the community can come in and interact with us, because that is not legal for regular board meetings. We cannot have conversations. It's against Illinois School Code. But the committee of the whole meetings allow for interaction and discussion. We host coffees. As they mentioned, we have a new initiative to ask community members to invite us to where you are, to your meetings, your community groups, neighborhood groups, whatever. And we hold our board meetings. Everything we do is online, it's on YouTube. People can watch what we're doing, be knowledgeable, what's going on through that. It is always a work in progress, as we saw from the referendum. What they told us was representative data was not reliable decision-making data, because we unfortunately know the, the results of that. So it's a work in progress.
Thank you. Candidate Pacheco. What do you, would you see as your role in enhancing communication between the district and the community at large?
Once again, this board's not listening. The community, the question's asking, how do we enhance communication between the district and the community? We are the community. We're part of this community. So what this board needs to do is ask the administrators to be more communicative. I just had a call with our assistant soup this week, teaching and learning, and I told her, why am I hearing that on Monday, you're touting a new literacy curriculum that's been in process in committee from Facebook? You guys issue a district digest all the time, telling us when we have days off school and that it's kindness month. That's the stuff I want to hear about in the district digest. What committees are we meeting? What professional development are our teachers engaged in? That's how you increase community, you give communication. You give the community the information they need, and they don't give us that. And the job of the board is to ask the administrators to do that. And they don't get it. They're hosting these coffees on Saturday afternoons. Most of the parents in this community are at Center Ice at hockey and ice skating practice on Saturday mornings. Most of the people in this community are at Ackerman at basketball practice Saturday mornings. They're on the soccer fields. They can't come to coffees on Saturday mornings. And that again shows the disconnect between this board and our community. They're not listening, because they're not speaking with us. And they're not asking administrators to do it either. But they could.
Thank you. Candidate Essis. What policies and practices would you either keep or change in order to ensure our schools are equitable and inclusive? What policies and practices would you keep, rather keep or change, in order to ensure our schools are equitable and inclusive?
Well, I'm going to have to go back to the strategic plan, because really, that's the guiding document here. And its overriding principle is that we value every learner and that we include everybody and we help them reach their full potential. It's right here, right? One of our foundational pillars is equity-driven, to meet the needs and facilitate growth by diverse learners, fostering a culture of inclusion where all children, families, and staff are embraced and valued equally, regardless of race, religion, sexual orientation, gender, socioeconomic circumstance, or ability. It's all spelled out right here. And this, I'm really proud of, because it wasn't just put together by a couple of people that involved the community. Or it was more than a year, because we had an interruption in the middle there. I forget what happened then. But we were, we were able to, able to do this in spite of those difficulties. And this really is something to be proud of as a community. And it shows, it shows what we are going to be doing in order to reach those goals.
Thank you. Candidate Hill. What policies and practices would you either keep or change in order to ensure our schools are equitable and inclusive?
We already have inclusion in our district. It's something that we're very proud of. The administration and staff has done a lot of professional development to make sure that it is a successful program. As Mr. Essie's mentioned, it is a driving force of our strategic plan. Equity is centered, and where you find the inequity is in the achievement gap. And so everything that the district does will be focused on closing that achievement gap. It will be to prop up and, as they say in the Education World Scaffold, the at-risk learners, the learners who need a little extra help, all while keeping the kids who are already at the top, at the top, enriching, you know, offering enrichment for them. Yeah, I think.
Thank you. Candidate Pacheco. I'll repeat the question one more time. What policies do you believe, what policies and practices would you either keep or change in order to ensure our schools are equitable and inclusive?
Yeah, I have a lot to say about this. I don't know if I can dig it all in, and I'm going to try. I work in a district that's 51% low income. We have 700 students, 200 of that 700 are English-language learners. 70 of those 200 are in their first year in American public school. My board tasks me with this question every day. I have to produce data for them. I have to show them that we're supporting all our diverse populations. And I do that by analyzing achievement data. I look at how our diverse populations are doing compared to the whole, and then I make recommendations for instructional shifts based on what that data tells me. My board puts that pressure on me to do that. So if that's not happening here, that's the fault of our board. Also, we currently in District 41 have co-teaching practices, which is great for supporting inclusion. I led the initiative myself in my district. We have inclusion practices, great for supporting the inclusive needs of students. However, are we monitoring the efficacy of those programs? How effective is co-teaching at Hadley? How effective is inclusion in our elementary schools? Does the board know that? Does the admin know that? They could know that if they were analyzing that achievement data and they were breaking it down into groups and comparing it to the whole. You know, we also have a curriculum that ensures that we have highlighted the contributions of diverse people. That's really important, too. So, thank you.
Candidate Butler. What policies and practices would you either keep or change in order to ensure our schools are equitable and inclusive?
Yeah, I'm going to point to a different page in the strategic plan. It's this one with the umbrella. So the, the top of board level committee is the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. And underneath that, we have committees for Student Services, Language Programs, Equity Subcommittee, and a Community Advisory Subcommittee. So I think that is definitely something that we've started, we need to keep doing. I also will echo that our inclusion program is something we are going to keep doing. Co-teaching, probably something we'll want to continue doing and expand. We have daily PLC time where our professionals can get together and assess the individual data. They are the ones doing that data analysis and review. I think when we talk about governance, we have to remember that the board isn't the one analyzing the data. It's the professionals, and we are monitoring and asking questions. And we're doing that on a regular basis. We do that at least annually, usually more. Also, I think we're looking at how social-emotional learning and adding mental health services as a, as a piece of that important equity work. And I just, a quick reminder that 80% of our community are not parents, so they're not busy doing all those things that were described on the Saturday morning. And we do have to be mindful of all the different kinds of stakeholders that we're trying to meet their needs and when they can be with us.
Thank you. Candidate Hill. What policies do you believe should be maintained, added, or removed in order to support gender-diverse What policies do you believe should be maintained, added, or removed in order to support gender-diverse students?
I am unaware of any policies from the board that, that would take away support from gender-diverse students. I think creating a warm, welcoming, diverse community makes gender-diverse students welcome. We don't, you know, we can offer, like, books in our libraries that reflect all kinds of people and all kinds of families in our classrooms. I don't think we, as far as I know, we don't have anything that needs to be removed. But the climate and the literature in our schools can go along with it.
Thank you. Candidate Pacheco.
The same question. Yeah, I'm preparing for this forum. I actually looked into this last night, as a matter of fact. And the current board has no policies on its record that support our gender-diverse students.
Thank you. Candidate Butler.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. What policies do you believe should be maintained, added, or removed in order to support gender-diverse students?
So it became law a couple of years ago for teachers to use the pronouns and preferred names of students, so that's certainly one that we have in place. And in our bathrooms, we have, we have, we meet the needs of all genders in both of our bathrooms. And we have, we have some gender-inclusive bathrooms as well. But in terms of pointing back to our strategic plan and that idea that belongingness is a prerequisite for learning, that all of our students need to feel like they belong, and that is the basis for our strategic plan and our inclusion efforts. And so, yes, in our materials, we have representative books and examples in our curriculum. We have, at Hadley, we have a gender, LGBTQ-inclusive safe space after-school activity. And it's so, I, I think the students are really the ones that are driving it. They're, they're here, and we're going to continue to evolve to meet their needs. But I, I find that in our schools, it's a very safe and supportive environment, but we can't be complacent, because we know that those students are subject to higher rates of...
Thank you. Candidate Essis. What policies do you believe should be maintained, added, or removed in order to support gender-diverse students?
Well, I don't, hang on, oops. So I actually do think that there is a statement in the policy, I don't have it in front of me, supporting people regardless of gender identity or sexual orientation. And what I just read previously, in terms of our foundational pillar, also mentioned that as well. I think we have to make sure that we're never complacent about that. I'm sure there's still instances where students feel uncomfortable, or maybe staff feels uncomfortable about that, and we need to provide a safe, protective space. I was sort of heartened, I think it was the end of last year, our student board members did a survey of their eighth-grade classmates in terms of how do you feel about, you know, the supportive nature in the schools? And most of the answers came back really positive. So I think, I think we're doing a good job, but certainly need to make sure that, especially with the outside world sometimes stirring things up in that regard, we need to make sure that they have safe spaces.
Thank you. Sadly, that was our last question. I'll take it back. And we'll begin with candidate Pacheco for your closing statement.
At the November 4 meeting immediately following their failed referendum, Board President Bruno stated, "I'm trying to understand why this didn't pass. The challenge of finding a path to do all these things is that it's going to require some gift from everyone. It's my view that something will have to be built, and some kids will have to move somewhere." This is a complete rejection of the 64% of voters that refused their referendum. Our taxes are not gifts. Our kids are not moving anywhere. This board votes as a team, and that is their team captain. In the past two years, there's been approximately 98 substantive votes, and this board has voted unanimously 96 times. And they'll continue to do that if we don't vote in someone new. You want someone on this board who represents the community's interests and not their own. I can be that person. Assets, not agendas. Don't vote for three, just vote for me.
Thank you. Candidate Butler, your closing statement.
Yeah, so my desire to serve in D41 is rooted in my positive experiences. As a student, I grew up in a blue-collar family in the Boonies of Illinois, where attending college was the exception, not the norm. And teachers that believed in me as much as my parents did helped me grow in ways that my parents could not. As a spouse of an educator, I've been listening to the stories for the past 23 years that share the perspectives of teaching in a classroom, managing IEPs in leading an elementary school. As a mother, I feel so privileged that our schools and community offer my daughter so many more opportunities than I had. And as a friend of other parents, sharing in their joys and frustrations as they advocate for their children. And as an active participant, building programs in the PTA Rally and Support for a Referendum, helping others stay informed about our district, and bringing back good governance to the board. Our schools and our community are great because of the people in them. It's important to me that I continue to be part of what is already so excellent and positive. Thanks again to the League for hosting and to all of you for listening. I will be honored to serve District 41 for another four years. Please vote for me, Jessica Butler.
Thank you. Candidate Essis, your closing statement.
Shortly after Jess, Julie, and I received Dr. Kaskowski started her tenure with the district, since then, the board and the superintendent have become strong team weight, working together to solve issues, craft plans, and do what's best for our students. In 2020, the board received recognition for governance by the IASB for the first time, which was renewed again two years later. Board meetings have become shorter and less frequent, but at the same time, much more productive, as we focus on the important work of the board and delegate the operational responsibilities of running the district where they should be, in the hands of the administration and staff. I believe the culture and emotional climate of an organization begins with the top leadership. The current board has been leading by example, set the tone and direction of the school district, working in respectful collaboration with each other, the administration, and the community. I would like that to continue. Please vote for the top three on the ballot for District 41's board, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. And candidate Hill, your closing statement.
We are a high-achieving, fiscally responsible district. We have run a budget surplus for the last seven years at least. We have a clean audit every year, and when we spend money, it's on the kids. We spend less than average on a per-student basis in the state of Illinois, for Illinois districts. Despite spending less than the state average per student, we still outperform 90% of them. Our academic reports over the last several years have shown growth, they've shown high achievement. We are now in the top 10% of performing districts in the state of Illinois. All of these achievements are because of the decisions we make at the board table. All of these achievements are because of the decisions we make at the board table. So it is important to know who you're voting for, and make sure that when you vote, you know what that person stands for. And I will tell you that I will reflect the voice of the community, I will respect the experts, the evidence, and the information they bring us, and I will protect our educational investments. Election Day is April 4th, and I hope I can earn your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Join me now in thanking the candidates for being on us.